Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant Arms, has the front lobby been attended to?
Thank you, Chief.
Request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I am pleased to welcome the February 21st, 2024 School Board Meeting. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is called to order. Prior to tonight's performance, we have been enjoying music from the Mariner Middle School Jazz Band. This group is under the direction of Darren Knolf. This group recently received the highest rating of Superior at the Florida Band Masters Association's Jazz Music Performance Assessment. Additionally, the Mariner Middle School Music Program was given an award at the Florida Music Education Association State Conference for having one of the highest ratios of students enrolled in their music program. Over seventy percent of Mariner's middle school students are enrolled in music classes. Please give this group another round of applause.[323.02][323.02](APPLAUSE). So we are going to take a brief pause to allow them to play one more song. Thank you. Thank you, Mariner Middle School Jazz Band. So we're going to take a brief pause to clear the area. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. At this point, we'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. Right now, we're going to move on to this evening's agenda, which includes invocation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include two items under board office, one item under executive services, five items under academic services, six items under business services, one item under human resources, one item under information systems, thirteen items under operations, one item under public hearings, and four items under good-of-the-order other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Jordan?
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Is there a second? I second it. Okay. Move by Ms. Jordan, second by Mr. Persons. Please record your vote. Motion carries seven zero. As is the custom of the board, Board Member Juvenelli will introduce her guest for the invocation, after which Board Member Morgan will lead us in the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. So please, at this moment, we're going to move on to the invocation. Please stand. Ms. Juvenelli, please lead us in the invocation.
This evening, I would like to welcome Rabbi Nicole Luna of the Temple Bethel. Rabbi Luna is a recipient of the Bonnie and Daniel Tisch Fellowship, a prestigious fellowship meant to foster future transformational rabbinical leaders. Rabbi Luna is blessed to share her life in her husband and young daughters. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Welcome Rabbi Luna.
Thank you so much for this invitation. I am honored to share an invocation from the Jewish tradition. Almighty God, thank you for the health and strength to come together this evening for the sacred task of engaging in the needs of our community. We ask for your blessing upon our school board and all those who play a role in educating the youth of our county. Give them wisdom and insight as they tackle the issues and challenges of leading this great community forward. We are all made in your image, God, all vessels for your holiness, and you are with and love each and every one of us. May the discussions and decisions made this evening honor the divine found within us, honor you, so that we may live up to your call for Sadek justice and righteousness and Shalom, peace and well-being. When we work to repair this world, when we rise above our complacency and offer compassion and love, we answer your call. When we fight to eradicate poverty, injustice, and discrimination, we answer your call. When we make a choice to help another human being in need instead of averting our gaze, we answer your call. Blessed are you, eternal our God, ruler of the universe, who makes us holy with commandments and commands us to engage in the needs of our community. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, please lead us in the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance.
Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is Sergeant First Class Michael Walter, excuse me, Michael Walker, Army Instructor from Ida S. Baker High School. Sergeant Walker served twenty-four years in the Army in numerous assignments and retired as Sergeant First Class in the Louisiana Army National Guard Recruiting Battalion. This is Sergeant Walker's third year as a JROTC instructor in the district. Welcome and thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Master Sergeant Gabriela Figueroa, the Cadet Sabre Team Commander from Ida S. Baker High School, JROTC. Cadet Figueroa is one of our top students in her graduating class at Ida S. Baker and is a member of the JROTC color guard team. She is actively involved in JROTC and is a commander of our saber team and an upcoming member of our cadet staff. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This evening's student representative is Deniria Smith. Deniria is an eighth grader at Calusa Middle School. She enjoys reading, coloring, cooking, and spending time with her family. Her teachers inspire her and allow her the chance to chase her dreams to travel the world. Deniria considered herself to be a shy student until Mrs. Woods, her cheer coach, and Mrs. Ware, her math teacher, pushed her to have her voice. Her favorite class at Calusa Middle School taught her, teacher at Calusa Middle School, that if you want respect, you have to give respect. Deniria hopes to attend Alabama University to pursue a degree in nursing. Please welcome Deniria. Next on the agenda are recognitions. Deniria, if you'd please go ahead and do the honor.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. There are two recognitions this evening. We will begin with the recognition, it's not... Yes, I'm sorry. We will begin with the recognition of Manners High School JROTC Marksmanship Team. The Manner Tritons Marksmanship Team is being honored this evening for several remarkable accomplishments. In the last thirty days alone, the Tritons have won three different state championships, two of which are repeats from last year, and two national championship matches in Ohio and Alabama respectively. While all three, while all these competitive results are impressive, what stands out even more is the character values and life skills cadet athletes in JROTC learn and accomplish. Our own district production team recently created a video about marksmanship, giving us a glimpse to Manners JROTC recipe for success. Let's play the video.
The Mariner High School JROTC Marksmanship Team just took home the school's first Army JROTC national title after winning the school's second consecutive state title. For this team, it's more about learning essential life skills than taking the perfect shot.
The lessons that I've learned from it, like being disciplined, having patience, all of that, like I didn't have that before when I joined the team. So it's like that really made me evolve into the person I am today.
Actually, our favorite thing about the sport of shooting is the fact that it teaches so many life skills: focus, concentration, discipline. And the best thing about that for these kids is that translates back into the classroom. So you'll see these athletes with these type of skills really improve their academic performance, builds their self-confidence, their self-esteem, they're more inclined to talk in public or in front of people.
I've changed a lot. I've made more friends. I'm more outspoken than I was in middle school or as a freshman. And I've really learned to like be open about new decisions, new choices.
Mariner's Marksmanship Team is coached by husband and wife Mary Beth and Major Brian Williams. Major Williams is the senior Army JROTC instructor, and Coach Williams is a volunteer coach.
Our coach, Mary Beth Williams, is a great coach. She focuses on character and coachability. And our team is a team. We are a family. Our team wouldn't be here if it wasn't for our coaches and for each other.
I'll be honest, my wife and I didn't ask to coach this team. It was available, there was a need, so we stepped in, and it only took us a few weeks to realize how the sport of shooting can transcend a young person's life.
In marksmanship competitions, JROTC cadets use single-load small-pallet air rifles. They shoot in a controlled environment down designated lanes at targets from three positions: prone, standing, and kneeling.
It's very mental. If you get in your head for even a second, that could really mess you up, and it'll affect you in the long run. Being a family is the biggest thing, I feel like, because if someone's down, you can always help them.
The secret formula to Mariner's success: character. Their number-one focus is on developing young people of character and honing life skills and values.
So because the kids, in order to be in a high-performing team, which is the culture we created, it means you have to be committed, you have to be consistent, you have to have a ton of focus and concentration and dedication. We don't focus on the results. We, of course, care about the results, the shooting results, but it's about character.
The next test of their winning formula is in March at the JROTC National Championship in Ohio. This is the final competition between the top seven teams in the country, from not only the Army JROTC, but also Marines, Navy, and Air Force JROTC programs. Lee County is cheering for you. Riley Spicker, Lee Schools TV.
Board members, please join us in the pit.
I would like to invite Senior Army Instructor Major Brian Williams and volunteer coach Mary Beth Williams to join me at the lecture. Before we call these amazing cadet athletes forward, I'd like to highlight a few more impressive results. The Mariner Marksmanship Team cumulative GPA is 3.6. Their school attendance rate is ninety-seven percent, and they have had a zero disciplinary referrals in the past five years. Team members average thirty to fifty hours of community service each year, and ten of the twelve upperclassmen are in national honor societies. And several of the Mariner Marksmanship seniors are on track to receive civilian marksmanship program scholarships. Now, these are results. At this time, on behalf of the school board of Lee County and the superintendent, we will present the team with special certificates of achievement. The Mariner Marksmanship Team is led by volunteer coach Mary Beth Williams and her husband, Major Brian Williams. I will now ask the members of the public to please hold their applause until all members of the team have been called, and then we'll take a group photo. Eureka Vasquez, senior team commander, current JROTC district and state individual champion, qualifier for eight national matches, team member of five state championships. Wow. Erica, sorry. Nathan Krokstrom, senior. Three individual state and district championships, two individual national championships, and four top-eight national championships placements. Leland Aldrich, senior team executive officer, team member of two state championships, qualifier for five national championships. Tyler Denard, junior, Junior Olympics individual state champion, member of five state championships and eight national qualifying teams. Tyler is being scouted for the prestigious Army Marksmanship Unit. Alyssa Vasquez, sophomore, the youngest member of the Mariner's Team One, member of two state championship and four national qualifying teams. Malia Low, junior?
Malia.
Malia, I'm sorry. Low, team captain of Mariner Team Two, placing five at nationals and individual fifth place as district championship. Jaden Hart, senior, two-time national qualifier, team member of national championship fifth-place team and 2023 JV individual first place. Zo Insolent, sophomore, team member of the national championship fifth-place team and two-time national qualifier. Jacoby, okay, I'm like, how do you say?
Changasie.
Changasie. Jacoby Changasie, sophomore, team member of the national championship fifth-place team, two-time national qualifier. Caitlin Berry, the only freshman varsity member, team member of the national championship fifth-place team and two-time national qualifier. Last but not least, our coaches, Major Brian Williams and volunteer coach Mary Beth Williams. In March, the Mariner will, the Mariner Team will compete in the most prestigious junior... Is that his? Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, switch. All right. In March, Mariner will compete in the most prestigious Junior Air Rifle Championship in the United States at Camp Perry, Ohio, where athletic ROTC scholarships are at stake. We wish you the best of luck at the national competition. Go Tritons. Congratulations.
I would like to invite our community partners' representatives to join me at the lecture. Come on up. On September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, the U.S. Constitution was signed by fifty-five delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia's Independence Hall. Federal law requires classroom instruction that includes the United States Constitution during the week of Constitution Day. In honor of this...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please provide a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Concerns will be addressed by the Superintendent or her staff as necessary, and the chair may comment as deemed appropriate at the conclusion of public comment. The Superintendent or board attorney may also comment if deemed appropriate. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions, and the general operation of the district. The School Board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language such as cursing, insults, derogatory language levied against an individual or a class of people are prohibited. Further personal attacks such as name-calling are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the parliamentarian. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1 and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to find the number for us. 13 individuals that wish to address the board this evening. The time per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you, Attorney DePree Bruno. Please ensure you have completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. These cards are located with the staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a public comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay. Can we... So, okay. Are we getting it? Okay. Thank you. At this point, Attorney DePree Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up: Lou Navarro, Tara Jenner, Ryan Monroe, Yapram Dharavanyan, Madeline Stewart.
Good evening, Tara Jenner.
Ms. Jenner, just wait for the timer.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Tara Jenner, I would like to address a question that I had and a request for confirmation on something. I understand that you have a number of policies that you're going to be considering for voting on tonight, some that are revisions and some that are new. I do understand that several of these address the same topic, depending upon whether it's a staff member or a teacher or so forth. And so that's not what I'm referring to when I talk about different policies. But we have a policy on political activities, one on use of employee personnel property at the school, and one entitled controversial issues. And when I looked through these, I noticed that they did not cross-reference one another. And I respectfully request if it can be done as an administrative change and doesn't need to, you know, constitute a complete revision of the policy, that that cross-reference occurs because there is similar content and they deal with the same parameters and the same subject matter. And one of them actually does cross-reference another, but the one that cross-references doesn't cross-reference back. I know that, I'm sorry, not very clear on how I'm explaining this. But I think if we're paying big bucks to Neola, the least they can do is get all of the policies that interrelate cross-referencing one another. Because if I go and I look at a policy, I'm going to assume it's all incorporated in that one unless it cross-references to something else. I'm not going to know that there might be something else that addresses the same subject matter and topic if it's not in there. So I just respectfully request if administratively that can be added, that would be fantastic. If it needs to come back through the board, by all means, vote on it now and then do it as a revision and an amendment later. That would be my recommendation and request on that. Also, last time that I came here, there were a couple people that spoke from this microphone that were removed from the room because of the content of what they said. One individual used a word that apparently was deemed to be controversial as far as, you know, attacking somebody. Somebody else actually quoted scripture and was removed. Yet, a third person, when he came up to the microphone, he spoke very clearly and very appropriately. But when he returned to his seat, and I'm just gonna, for the board, I'm gonna explain this, but for the audio, I'm gonna also explain it. Somebody who was sitting over not too far from Mr. Ramirez, he sat back down over there, and the F-bomb was used against him along with a couple of other very inappropriate comments. That individual was not called out. And I will say, I was sitting over on the aisle, almost towards the back of the room, and I could hear those comments. So it kind of makes me wonder why it was not addressed.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ryan Monroe. It's good to be here today. I'm glad there's some proactive work going on in this board on behalf of the children of Lee County. We believe the children in Lee County need protection. Different sexual behaviors or actions or appropriate conversations to children and keep that going. Certain things are appropriate. You learn those things when you're about 10 years old usually, but the purple people have a different definition these days of what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And I want to keep, if we can, keep everything old-school. We don't need different religions coming into our schools. In my opinion, the left and the CRT and the LBGBT flag all represent special interests. Remember, we're one people. We're the American people. We don't need all these divisions. And I'm sure some people here in Lee County still maybe think we can have the Confederate flag. We should just have the American flag. That's the appropriate flag in the United States. And, you know, that's the one we should fight for. That's the one that we should show here in our schools. And that's the one we pledged to a few minutes ago. And that's the only one we should have. I want to thank you for giving me a chance to speak about that. All right? So we have about a minute left. That was mostly what I wanted to say. I still hope you guys are going to be teaching cursive language. We need to know how to read the Constitution, and we need to know how to read the Declaration of Independence. So if you're...I would like to see more of that, people learning the original language so you can read for yourself the Constitution and Declaration of Independence. That would be, that's my pet peeve. I taught my son, myself, in this district how to sign his name because it wasn't being taught here anymore. And I don't believe that the cursive language should be replaced because computers, you know, there's a lot of computer signatures these days, but you still gotta sign, like I said before, you gotta sign a check, you gotta sign a loan, you gotta sign a mortgage, you gotta sign a lease, car lease, house lease. Still gotta sign your name. You don't need to...and the way you sign your name, if you don't know cursive, is pretty bad. So everybody should know how to sign their name. That's one. I mean, we want to graduate students from our high school that can sign their name. And that would definitely be a plus in our district. So let's make sure that's happening. And I want to thank you for being proactive also with the, you know, pro-teacher, pro-children actions you want to take today. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Madeline Stewart. It's a pleasure to see you all again, having just spent the last four hours with you all. I'm really not clear on if we are going to, if you were going to proceed to vote on the policies that were discussed. And I want to commend you on a fantastic discussion. It was so really wonderful to hear each of you express your views so clearly. I want to just repeat something that was said earlier about Policy 3281, which is that it doesn't have a law that corresponds with the reason for the policy. Am I being clear? So the point is, why would you be, why would you do that? Why would you open yourself up to creating a policy that is not based on anything that is currently in law? That doesn't make any sense to me. And we've already heard a lot of discussion about how difficult the implementation of that policy is going to be and what kind of culture it will continue to create in the school district. So I urge you not to adopt that policy this evening if you haven't already done so in your minds. I just think that teachers need support. They don't need any more people policing what they're doing in the classroom. That should come about if you need to do in-service, if you need to do professional development, that's what needs to be done with the principal and your academic services team, but not the policing because that does not serve anybody's desire to have learning occur because it doesn't occur if there's fear in the classroom. And I think you must know by now that there is fear in classrooms in Lee School District, and that is not a way to go forward. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up: Marge Cox, Heather Rodriguez Wibbles, India Palencia, Richard Coffley, Joe Phillips.
You already started me off here. Let's go back to one, please. Yapram Dharavanyan, Lehigh Acres, Florida. I love my country, but I fear my government. Comments I have is astonished at the last board meeting when this board walked out three times. This is childish. It's not good policy. I couldn't believe it. I've been coming to board meetings since Nancy Pelosi was superintendent. Never seen any action like this. You people walked out because people came up here and used their right of free speech. And when you don't like something, you're like kids. You get up and walk out. Embarrassing. Embarrassing. Couldn't believe it. Could not believe it. Unbelievable. And then you had a student representative here. He saw what you did in front of him. Communism up front. If you speak out, you walk out. You don't like what people say, you walk out. How's that feel to a student representative at this meeting? It's shocking. Unbelievable. Embarrassing. Should all be ashamed of yourself? Shame, shame, shame on you. Not good. Not good. Last thing I have to say is, this teacher that brought up all this about flags and putting symbols on the flags, I don't have no problem with bringing up the NAACP Black Lives Matters, LGBTQ. Let them bring those groups up. They're terrorist groups. They don't like this country, so let's learn about it.
Evening, I'm Madeline Stewart. It's a pleasure to see you all again, having just spent the last four hours with you all. I'm really not clear on if we are going to, if you were going to proceed to vote, to proceed to vote on the policy, policies that were discussed. And I want to commend you on a fantastic discussion. It was so really wonderful to hear each of you express your views so clearly. I want to just repeat something that was said earlier about policy 3281, which is that it doesn't have a law that corresponds with the reason, and you need, for the policy. Am I being clear? So the point is, why would you be, why would you do that? Why would you open yourself up to creating a policy that is not based on anything that is currently in law? That doesn't make any sense to me. And we've already heard a lot of discussion about how difficult the implementation of that policy is going to be and what kind of culture it will continue to create in the school district. So I urge you not to adopt that policy this evening if you haven't, if you haven't already done so in your minds. I just think that teachers need, need support. They don't need any more people policing what they're doing in the classroom. That should come about, if you need to do, do in service, if you need to do professional development, that's what needs to be done with the principal and your academic services team, but not the policing because that does not serve anybody's desire to have learning occur because it doesn't occur if there's fear in the classroom. And I think you must know by now that there is fear in classrooms in Lee School District, and that is not a way to go forward. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Marge Cox, Heather Rodriguez Wibbles, India Palencia, Richard Coughley, Joe Phillips.
You already started me off here, let's go back to one, please. Yeah, from Darvahunyan, Lehigh Acres, Florida. I love my country, but I fear my government. Comments I have is astonished at the last board meeting when this board walked out three times. This is childish. It's not good policy. I can't, couldn't believe it. I've been coming board meetings since Nancy Pelosi was superintendent. Never seen any action like this. You people walked out because people came up here and used their right of free speech. And when you don't like something, you're like kids. You get up and walk out. Embarrassing, embarrassing. Couldn't believe it. Could not believe it. Unbelievable. And then you had a student representative here, he saw what you did in front of him. Communism up front. If you speak out, you walk out. You don't like what people say, you walk out. How's that feel to a student representative at this meeting? It's shocking, unbelievable, embarrassing. Should all be ashamed of yourself? Shame, shame, shame on you. Not good, not good. Last thing I have to say is, this teacher that brought up all this about flags and putting symbols on the flags, I don't have no problem with bringing up the NAACP, Black Lives Matters, LGBTQ. Let them bring that, those groups up. They're terrorist groups, they don't like this country, so let's learn about it. Bring them up. They're not good groups.
Excuse me, sir, you can't call a group people, you can't disparage them and call them a group of terrorists.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
What did I say?
Do not disparage. You may continue.
I did what?
Continue.
Again, another thing, free speech. You can't say nothing in this room. It's terrible. It's shameful. You should all be ashamed of yourself. That's all my comments.
Good evening Superintendent, School Board, Lunivar, retired teacher and Talc member. In the words of Lyndon B. Johnson, "I come to you with a heavy heart. I'm very concerned with the recent developments since my hiatus of six weeks from this board." One, you put Mr. Mike Andosia's books in administrative lockup? What in God's name is administrative lockup? He resigned as award-winning teacher of distinction after 30 years in the classroom. Even the governor in his brilliance thinks this has all gone too far. This violates the First Amendment. Board, refuse to accept his resignation tonight and give him back his books for his class before we have the 1933 Nazi book burning, not 1938, Dr. B. Let him finish his career with dignity, just like you demand dignity in these meetings. Parental rights, what is that? I will tell you, in my 30 years of teaching, parental rights meant the parent told the children, "Go to school, study, obey the teacher, respect one another." As a sixth grade science teacher, the quote "troublemakers" came from broken homes. Parenting starts in the home. Check the record of all the school shooters. Google it in. I have told this board, do, I have told this board, do you tell your heart doctor how to perform open-heart surgery? No. Why tell teachers how to teach? Number two, woke? No woke. The Riverdale teacher must cover up his bulletin board for one flag? Where are you, Talc President Daley? This teacher has his First Amendment rights violated. The board's new rules for tonight's meeting, you're like they have oral council. After they wrongly arrested that fellow in front of me, they passed new rules to punish citizens to voice their opinions. Board, you're doing the same thing tonight. What happened to protests for student learning? I don't see them. The new Florida fast test results, 46% literacy rate. Shame. I want to see signs protesting failure of learning. Why are we protesting things that have no bearing on learning? I will tell you, the educational system is so bogged down with lack of discipline, God out of there if you're Christian, or if you're agnostic honesty, respect and integrity and love. So let's do everything else but learning because we cannot fix learning in education.
Thank you, your time's up. Your time is up, sir, you're done.
Good evening, I'm Marge Cox, I live in Bonita Springs, I'm a retired educator. And first of all, I want to say thank you for allowing public comments so that you get a chance to hear from a variety of voices. I appreciate the work you do as a school board. It's no easy job and you continue to make every effort to make a difference for kids. And that's what I want to speak to tonight and, because I think our concern for all of us is our kids, our students. I said our kids, and it's like as an educator, all the students I have were my kids. At one point, I was in a different board meeting and they said, "How many kids do you have?" And I said, "About 150." I was in middle school at that point. And they said, "No, how many physical kids do you have?" And I was like, "Oh, that's a whole different question and answer." So I think all of our hearts are about kids and education. I know you're looking at policies tonight, and I think there are already policies in place that can take care of concerns. So I'm urging you to vote against new policies, enforce the policies that are there, but we don't need more policies. Our teachers are working under a lot of stress, a lot of the time. They don't need more over-the-shoulder look at that. And for our principals who are working so hard, and the word principal originally came from principal teacher or the lead teacher, the best teacher that they had was the principal. And our principals need to get to spend their time on education, not enforcing more policies. So in terms of education for our kids, I hope you will reject adopting policies tonight and let our educators work on educating. That's where their heart is, and your heart's also in that same place on behalf of our kids. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. Heather Rodriguez Wibbles, school counselor, Barbie from previous session. Nice to see some of you again. Hi, DeNerea, I have to stop real fast. DeNerea's from my school, she's amazing, I'm so proud and happy to see her. Mom and dad, excellent work. We are so happy she's at our school. Okay, sorry, had to have your fanfare moment because you're worth it. But all of our students are worth it. So part of the reason I've come here, besides cheerleading for someone who deserves it, is please take your time to make sure that your board budget is properly allocated for bargaining. And I say this not just of the money aspect, but we need, we need more teachers, we need more school counselors. I love being a counselor, I loved being a teacher, but it's a heavy load and we need more people to help lift because the kids deserve it. We are data-backed, we help bring up graduation rates, there's multiple mental health components of it. Additionally, we need to ensure there's funding for our MTSS coordinators to not have another person have to take on that role. So look into this some more. I heard there's some information in the briefing meeting I need to listen to some more. Also, you have the policies in place. We're here to support kids, we're, we don't need additional rules because everyone's here to support families. If you have a strong foundation at home, everything at school is just education. I was blessed with two great educator parents and I could hear or see anything, but I knew I could come home and speak to it. Even to people that don't have the same blessing I did, you have that opportunity to instill what works for your house because that's what works. If it's not solid in your house, that's a different story. But again, I have to go back to my, so happy you're here, I'm proud of you. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Hello, my name is, excuse me, India Palencia. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board and our superintendent, thank you for the, allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I stand before you as a concerned member of our community advocating for the safety and well-being of our children. Unfortunately, this simple act has become a challenging one, more so than I had ever anticipated. I come to you seeking an appeal of the decision made by the Transportation Review Committee to deny our request to relocate our school bus stop located at Tree Lane Avenue and Silver Ridge Boulevard, the entrance to our community. Despite their assertion that the current location meets the state and Lee County safety standards, we have compelling evidence that challenges this conclusion. We have submitted comprehensive documentation and personal testimonies that strongly indicate that the current bus stop is not the most reasonably safe location available for our children. More recently, Captain Roger Valdivia of the Fort Myers Police Department provided us with alarming data. Over the past two years, there have been nine traffic crashes at the current bus stop and an additional 21 crashes just a few hundred yards away. Moreover, 54 traffic stops were made in the same area, underscoring the urgency of our plea. The proposed alternative, our community clubhouse, has been demonstrated to be a far safer option. Moving the bus stop to this location aligns with the paramount concern for the safety of our children, which should always take precedence. We believe that the data provided by Captain Valdivia in conjunction with the evidence we provided to each of you board members last week and the Transportation Department before that makes a compelling case for an immediate relocation of the bus stop. It is essential to note that buses regularly traverse nearby communities such as Botanica Lakes, Plantation and Bridgetown, picking students up inside their gates. There is no logical or statistical reason why the current location fits the definition of most reasonably safe location available, more than inside our community, at the stop in which our builder was required to build. The primary responsibility of the Transportation Department should be to prioritize the safety of our children, and we implore the school board to ensure that this responsibility is upheld as the Transportation Department has failed to do so. As concerned constituents, parents and citizens, we cannot fathom any legitimate reason not to support this that would outweigh the lives of our children's. We have over 600 signatures in 800 families and the people you see behind me, dressed in blue, in support of this change. It should not be compromised for the sake of administrative convenience or concern of a perceived precedence of moving into a gated community or just moving a bus stop in general. Thank you for your time, attention and commitment to ensuring the safety of our community's most precious asset, our children. And I welcome whatever questions you may have. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Daniels, Jaclyn Perez, Stephanie Smith, Curtis Armstrong.
My name is Rich Coughley, I'm also a community member in Marina Bay in Fort Myers. I recently completed a two-year term as treasurer and director and I'm kind of a detail guy, so a lot of the, the research that was done was done by me in terms of the history as to how this all transpired with the bus stop as it is and how it actually should be. There is an Arborwood master development plan. Our community, along with that whole neighborhood, is part of the planned development of regional impact in Fort Myers. It's actually a city ordinance, City Ordinance 3226. Under that, under that city ordinance, one of the requirements was that the developer will cooperate with the Lee County Schools in location of bus, school bus stops throughout the Arborwood project. I don't have any specifics in terms of what transpired, but I do know the requirement that's in that ordinance. And I do know that our developer, under that requirement, did construct in our community a bus stop pavilion. It's actually a school bus stop pavilion, that's what is in the site plan. So we did it because of the coordination that was required under Fort Myers City Ordinance to do so. So that's, that was to find, cooperate with the best locations for school bus stops in our community, we did so. Florida statute, Florida statute says that each school district shall establish, shall establish school bus stops at the most reasonably safe location available. It seems like you did. You did that because you established it at the clubhouse at Marina Bay. But I guess subsequent to that, there's now a school district policy that says they're not going to enter communities, although as was stated earlier, you enter many communities. And I guess that's because you wanted to put your foot down and stop doing it for future communities. But in fact, you've already done that for other communities, you've done that for the community that was part of our same development. So it doesn't pass the common sense for anybody in our community that what we were forced to build, what a developer was forced to build is being ignored. And instead of having a safe place, we're having our children wait outside the community at one of the, a very high traffic region, a very limited sight distance region, an intersection, right in front of an intersection that has 14 different kinds of turns, four ways going north, four ways going south, and in and out from opposite directions. It just doesn't make sense that we have to have our children in the front of the community when we've built a very safe bus stop by your requirements inside the community. Thank you for your time.
I am Smokin' Joe. It's going to be two years since you handed over an investigation to the attorneys at Taylor English Derma. They completed it in December of 2022, and when you finally gave it to law enforcement, it was out of the statute of limitations. The problem with all of this is that you spent 80,000 taxpayers' money for this investigation and it had a lot of hardcore evidence that the district and all its wrongdoing, and because two characters are gone from this investigation, it doesn't absolve the sins and violations of this district. It clearly states in these documents that professional standards, your investigator wasn't doing his job. The procurement wasn't doing their job and for several high-level employees ignored the complaints and turned a blind eye along with board member from District Three. Ignoring these same things, ignoring these things seem to be a real district policy. That's why now it's going to cost us thousands of dollars because you ignored the signs of real problems of retaliation and discriminatory practices against two students who happened to be the only black students on the team. When we saw the evidence and read the complaint of what was done to these students, I'm embarrassed as a Floridian and as a Lee County resident, but none of you have any shame or are too cowardly to talk about the findings of this investigation for what happened at Fort Myers High School and what you could have done to prevented it. You know, if, you know, I'm a pretty religious man, and I'm going to say Revelations 221 verse eight says, "As bad as a murderer, as bad as sexual immorality and the sorcerers are." Not that God puts first, but God puts it first, the head of the line, the cowardly. "I will never be known as a coward, but the actions of this board not to have done something, it shows that you are at the head of the line for the gates of hell." Now, I was kicked out here for saying the word poison last week, and I'm going to tell you, my five-year-old daughter was outside. I picked her up from school, my wife, they waited outside, they didn't come in this meeting. And I'm going to tell you what my five-year-old daughter's seen after she heard what people screamed at us and the man that come, one of the nicer RSO officers removed him. She told me the other night, she said, "Dad," she said, "you can't always be here, I'm scared." I said, "What are you scared of?" She's, "I'm scared the purple people will come after me." That is poison. Thank you, I'm Smokin' Joe.
Robert Daniels. Been an interesting few board briefings about these changes in policies. I don't feel any of them are necessary. Myself and every other professional teacher working for you, no assert, swear, pledge to follow the teacher code of ethics as outlined by the Florida DOE, and that's conditional for us retaining our teaching certificates. And everything covered in the policies is covered and updated for current legislation in that Florida code of ethics for the teachers. What we need from you is the certainty that in the process of doing our jobs, the most easily offended individual on either side cannot cost us our livelihoods. A simple policy that says, if a complaint about the content or presence of materials in the room is made, the teacher will be given a written statement on what the complaint was in 48 hours to remove it. That's all we need. It can be taken down and removed without this level of fuss. And it doesn't even have to be anything political or cultural, hot-button issue. I taught biology for years. XX, XY are sex chromosomes determining the two sexes. Me saying that will upset one group of people. Be going on to say that it's possible to have intersex with those same chromosomes created in third and multiple other sexes that just don't fit those other two buckets is also possible, even though they're the exceptions to the rule. In fact- In fact, you could say it's the exception that proves the rule. Protection from both sides of that. So, establishing rather a policy that's very clear about what will be done with the teachers who, in their best efforts of following their code of ethics, beget a complaint from the public, that would do more to reassure the teachers than any other policy or any refusal for making those policies. That being said, we do have that shortage of teachers still, shortage of other professionals to work for you. And I'm going to just say once more that the 8% last year was a good start. We need another 16% to restore our average teacher wage to the average teacher wage for the state over the last 70 years. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Jaclyn Perez. I'm going to follow up on two of your speakers' speech, and one is that Taylor English complaint investigation that was conducted a little over a year ago when it was completed. On page 34, there were several recommendations that were made to the board to follow, and as yet, I've only seen possibly two that the board has accomplished. I've received consistently phone calls from employees about still being bullied, targeted, harassed, making whistleblower complaints that aren't being followed through, and specifically on this recommendations for the attorneys that you paid $80,000 to, they were, the district administrative legal leadership on its own or through utilization of a third-party independent auditor may consider reviewing district policies, procedures. It says on another column, "The district may seek to review human resources policies, procedures, and training to address whether additional measures should be undertaken based on employee reports about favoritism, cronyism, bullying, conflicts of interest, and retaliation within the department." Your only problem is not just money, but there's still a problem within the district on how employees are being treated, and that needs to be aggressively approached so you can make your employees feel comfortable. It's not always just about money. If you make them feel that they are worthy, that they're being listened to, you speak about the listen-up, speak-up culture, and it's not happening everywhere. It's not. I wouldn't be getting phone calls consistently during the week that I share with several board members, that I share with administrators, and if you care, you genuinely care, follow the recommendations that you paid $80,000 for to help these employees feel comfortable, feel safe in their work conditions and their environments. Please, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. My name is Stephanie Smith, and I'm a resident of Fort Myers. I'm also a loved one of a teacher who works in the Lee County School District. I'm here to speak on and implore you to not adopt the amendments to your policies with district speech. In 1969, a set of students voiced support for a cause by wearing armbands, "Undisruptive to Education." This was the start of Tinker v. Des Moines, a Supreme Court precedent largely more relevant than I ever would have dreamed in my history course 12 years ago. Now, we are here because of a decoration that simply read, "Hate Has No Home Here." It contained icons, not flags, reflecting issues of public concern, protected under Tinker v. Des Moines, and with a U.S. flag above all to symbolize allegiance that even despite all this, we are all united as Americans and children in this country. This started months ago. Today, in Oklahoma, a student belonging to one of these groups, an American kid named Nex Benedict, was murdered by their peers in their school bathroom for that. If we have no home and make no home to understand the protected parts of our free speech, regardless of stating that it's not absolutist, that none are left at the schoolhouse door, that no aspect of our free speech is left outside by any as part of education, if we don't make home for this, we've evicted education for a home of hate, for a home of bullying, and for our teachers as well to feel unsafe voicing these situations. Many of us don't have homes where we can ask about these issues with our parents. Even PolicyNow suggests that we should ask a trusted adult, rather than teachers years ago, who are trusted for those of us who didn't have great home lives, to tell us about things that our parents couldn't. Please consider not adopting these, and please consider referring to the Act, the Stop Look Act, line 301, where teachers are implored to have discussions surrounding sexism, racism, and everything like that in a way that is age-appropriate and has been for decades in order to keep our kids safe, so we can understand these differences and educate ourselves for the pluralistic society that again is outlined in that same bill that everyone here says stops what we're discussing. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. First, I want to make a comment. I'd love to see the junior ROTC students here. I think that's wonderful, and from what I heard, those students all seem to be excelling. So, commend you for that. My question is, why does America spend the most money per student, yet we are ranked, I think I just read, 27th or 28th in the nation in the level of education when they leave? But what is that? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for their comments. It's appreciated. Dr. Bernier, and Attorney DeBree Bruno, do you have any follow-up to any of the public comments?
Mr. Chairs, just a few comments. First of all, thanking people for coming forward regarding our policy rules of the Discussions are better enriched with people of varying opinions. The variety of voices that lend to these discussions provides critical and vital input to board members and to a superintendent, as you make policy, and I am charged with enforcing it. We want to continue to help support all the members of our community coming forward to talk on these items. As to an employee discipline matter that was mentioned by a specific individual, it would be inappropriate to comment at this time regarding that particular situation. Our school counselor, Ms. Rodriguez Willes, thank you very much for being here again and providing us additional information related to the importance of school counselors and their role within our schools. I don't think anybody argues that, and earlier in the comments earlier today in either workshop or the briefing, we were discussing the ESER funding and how we're going to deal with that cliff. The previous administrations invested a lot of money in people in ESER, and I think it's a very dangerous practice of a school district to invest non-recurring funds in recurring expenses. But as we've notified those individuals, we have other places and opportunities, maybe not doing the same exact job, but your point is well-taken regarding the number and ratio that many of our positions deal with, including our classroom teachers, the number of students to the number of individuals responsible for educating them. Mr. Daniels, always good to see you. Thank you for once again bringing forward information regarding your opinion on the code of ethics, and also your desire for another pay raise. To Ms. Perez, we're getting there. I know you may not feel like we're there yet, but we continue to try to make strides on speak-up, listen-up. Additional information's been provided. Our Human Resources Division is retooling. Our board members have been out front in their own videotape messages. We are changing both the Leadership Development Program to try to create people who listen first and speak second. So, we may not be there yet, and that may be why you still get phone calls, I still get phone calls, board members, and other individuals still get phone calls. But we will continue to take those issues head-on and try to make the best decisions possible, create the culture that would create the best working environment, because there's two things that people join an organization for, and there's two reasons why they leave. They join because they want to have a sense of purpose, and they want to have a sense of impact. When they lose that sense of purpose, or do not believe they're having impact any longer, that's when people begin to make the decision about leaving the organization. Those are what we work on each and every day, and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Attorney DeBree Bruno, do you have anything for follow-up?
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Okay. Again, as I said, thank you, everyone, for your comments. They're truly appreciated. I'm going to follow up with Dr. Bernier, one speaker did mention about speak-up, listen-up, and that is totally correct. We still have a lot of work to do with that. I mean, we've had, I know I have, and many of us up here, we've had multiple discussions, it feels like every other meeting about that. So, we have a lot of work to do, and I do encourage all of our employees to speak up, please. And I know the superintendent has done a lot of work, as well as our board attorney, I do appreciate that, but we do have ways to go with that. So, just real comment in regards to last meeting, as I said, people indicated they were removed for certain things, if it's scripture, no. They were properly given warnings, and they did not follow those warnings. So, they were given full opportunity to speak. So, we do set an example for our kids and for this district, and I will continue to abide by that. So, again, thank you, and I do encourage everyone to keep coming and commenting. Next up on the agenda is the approval of action items under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or worked up with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items, any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? So, starting with you, Ms. Juvenelli.
I have none, thank you.
Ms. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I have none.
Mr. Persons.
I have none.
Ms. Langford Fleming.
I have none.
Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items for tonight?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda items.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Second, thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Langford Fleming and seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Please record your vote. The motion carries? Yes? Okay, motion carries 7-0. Dr. Bernier, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment approved under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We are pleased to announce that Anastasia Graflund will be becoming the Assistant Principal at J. Weaver Hips Elementary. To literally our newest, to literally our newest Assistant Principal, congratulations. Congratulations to you, to your school family, as well as your own personal family. For the personal family members, you need to support this individual as they head out on this journey. You've supported to this point in their career, but as they move forward into this process, they're going to even need more support. So, Ms. Graflund, just a reminder to you that these types of appointments are of great significance and a great symbol of a board's trust in an individual to do what's best around children each and every day. We know you're up to that task, and congratulate you for the honor of becoming Assistant Principal.
Congratulations, everyone. Before we move on to item Q, public hearings, we're going to take a brief...
Ah, thank you.
Recession.
Thank you.
So, we're going to recess for a few moments. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Oh, yes, yes. Okay, welcome back, everyone. So, my apologies, had to take a brief recess. I had to discuss some things with the board attorney, just a few procedural things. At this time, we are going to move into public hearings. So, Dr. Bernier, please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Mr. Chair, item Q1, approval to adopt new and revised board policies in compliance with the changes and related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt the best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be February 22, 2024.
Okay, we will now recess the school board meeting and open the public hearing. The time is 7:25 PM. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is considered Dr. Bernier's recommendation as previously stated. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for public comment is three minutes. So, we're going to go one section at a time. So, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the approval to adopt the new and revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability? The effective date of this adoption shall be February 22, 2024. We will start with chapter 000, bylaws, policy 0100, definitions. Do we have anyone wishing to make comment on said bylaws? Okay? Seeing none. Now, we're going to go into chapter 1000, which is administration, where we have two policies, policy 1232, political activities, and policy 1281, use of employees' personal property at school. Do we have any speakers wishing to make comment on that? Please approach the podium. So, please state your name and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you again. My name's Stephanie Smith and I'd just like to comment on the definition of political activities as it's protected under Tinker v. Des Moines along with other Supreme Court rulings. Public, political activities are distinctly separate than issues of public interest, first and foremost. Secondly, First Amendment rights are not left at the schoolhouse door despite being non-absolutist, and that should apply to salaried government employees who are, in fact, citizens before they are employees. I just would like to make that clear. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comment on the 1000 series? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to chapter 2000, program, policy 2240, controversial issues. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on said item? Okay, seeing none. Chapter 3000, instructional staff, policy 3232, political activities, and policy 3281, use of employees' personal property at school. Anyone wishing to comment on those said items? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to chapter 4000, support staff. That would be policy 4232, political activities, and policy 4281, use of employees' personal property at school. Is anyone wishing to make comment on those said items? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to chapter 6000, finances, policy 6330, acquisition of professional architectural, engineering, landscape architectural, or land surveying services. Anyone wishing, wishing to make public comment on that said item? Seeing none. Moving on to new policies. New policy for building permits in the building code, requirements for maintenance and construction, chapter 8000. New policy for design build firms and design criteria professionals, chapter 8000. New policy for disposal of surplus land and other real property, chapter 8000. New policy for facility rental, chapter 8000. New policy for leasing of school board-owned property, chapter 8000. New policy for lobbyists, chapter 6000. New policy for public-private partnership on solicited proposals, competitive solicitations, and direct negotiations regarding board-owned property and resources, chapter 6000. New policy for trespass violation and trespass appeals, chapter 8000. New policy for utility easements, chapter 8000. Anyone wishing to make public comment on those said items? Okay, seeing none. I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting of February 21, 2024. The time is 7:29.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did you ask if there were any speakers for policy 7310, disposition of surplus property, chapter 7000? I don't recall if you did or if you didn't.
I believe I did, but I'll go back and let me just, before I close this, chapter 7000, property, policy 7310, disposition of surplus property. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on that said item? Okay.
I think we might be having a technological issue because I can't see beyond, I'm being asked to vote on this. You know how that little thing comes up? And so, it's hard for me to see the policies because I can't-
Yeah, we're getting-
Do you know what I mean?
Board docs, I keep getting that as well.
Yeah.
Shall we X it out?
The advice of staff is to simply X out of the box and hit your refresh.
It keeps popping up. I've been doing it the whole time.
Oh, jeez.
What if we all vote Epstein?
Can't do that.
Can't do that. It's not on anything. One second. While we're discussing this, let me re-enter the normal meeting. I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the school board meeting of February 21, 2024. The time is 7:31 PM. Are we still having issues with board docs right now? It looks like we're cleared up on this. Okay.
And I suspect that we'll be doing roll call votes as well.
Yes. Okay, um, okay. So, give me one moment, so, um, okay. So, at this point, Dr. Bernier, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item Q1 is the approval to adopt new and revised board policies in compliance with changes and related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of this adoption shall be February 22, 2024.
Okay. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, the board approved to adopt the new and revised board policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability. The effective date of its adoption shall be February 20, 22, 2024. Ms. Morgan, at this point, do you have a motion to make?
I do. I move to divide the question as to the superintendent's recommendation to adopt new and revised policies and that the following policies be addressed separately. 1232, 3232, 4232, political activities. 1281, 3281, 4281, use of employees' personal property at school, and 2240, controversial issues.
Is there a second? Okay. Moved by Ms. Morgan and seconded by Ms. Patrica. Do we have any discussion?
There's no discussion.
No discussion on them.
Yep, you're right, so, um, one second.
Just a roll call vote.
Yep, okay. Roll call vote, start with Ms. Juvenelli.
No, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
May I ask a question? Regarding what makes it extraordinary?
Okay, we, pause if you want to explain real quick.
So, if there is an amendment, it will require a supermajority vote of five members, amendment to a policy.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
You record as a yes? Okay, um, one second. Mr. Persons?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Langford Fleming?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay. And I am a no. So, let me just double-check my math on this. So, that would be, uh, motion fails. My apologies. One second. Let me just make sure I got this right. Okay. Motion fails three, four, then. So, um, at this point, do we have another motion to be made? Ms. Patrica?
I move that we adopt all policies as recommended by Dr. Bernier, except 1281, 3281, 4281, 2240, 1232, 3232, and 4232.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Patrica, seconded by Ms. Morgan. We're going to have, uh, is there any discussion on this one?
Technically, it's the same motions, the motions divide, but we'll go ahead and move forward with it.
Okay. Anything before we go to vote? Was that a no or? Okay, Ms. Jordan?
My question is, as I'm reading the recommendation, it's to, the approval to adopt new and revised board policy in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes, which-
It also says to adopt-
Which is none of these.
But it also says to adopt best practices and promote transparency and accountability.
That would coincide with, with rules, regulations, and statutes, correct?
But, again, remember, please, the law is not just statutes, rules, and regulations. We went through this this afternoon in the briefing. The law encompasses case law, and I think it's, it's a disservice if we're just looking for statutes when we're thinking about policies because there's a lot of other things that affect policies. So, it doesn't say case law, it doesn't say, you know, other laws. It says specifically rules, regulations, and statutes and to adopt best practices, but law is a very wide scope of topic.
Any other discussion before we go to roll call? Okay, moving to roll call. Ms. Juvenelli?
No, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
We're just voting on, we're not voting, never mind. My answer is yes, please.
Yeah, just to make sure.
I know what I'm voting on.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We're clarifying? Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, please.
Mr. Persons?
No, thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, please.
And I'm a no. Motion fails three to four. We have another motion. May I make a suggestion that somebody will entertain the motion for the original recommendation by Dr. Bernier? Mr. Persons?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Dr. Bernier's original recommendation for the new policies and revisions.
Do we have a second?
I have a second. I have a second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Persons and seconded by Ms. Juvenelli. Board, do we have any discussion? Ms. Patrica?
I just want to be clear that a yes vote here will, if there's a, five or more people voting yes here, then the 1281, 3281, 4281, 1232, 3232, and 4232 will pass, correct? And if, 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 uh, three or more people vote no, those policies will not pass, but the new policies will pass. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Ms. Juvenelli?
Can you say that again, please?
So, per your board policy, it's actually in your bylaws, and I'm just going to pull it up really fast. I believe it's 031. You require an extraordinary vote, which is a vote of one plus the majority, is needed to pass an amendment to a policy. Thus, for any amendments to a policy, you require five votes. Any new policy, you can pass it with the majority, a simple majority of four votes.
Is that clear or do you need?
No, I, I, sorry. I understand that, but we're, now, I'm getting, it's getting, starting to get blurry on what we're voting on. That's all, I want to be real clear on that.
So, at this time, there are a set of policies in chapter 1000s all the way up through, I think, the 8000s, that whole set of policies that went to public hearing. That is what you're voting on tonight, right now, all of those policies. But the policies that will be passed are those policies that, if it's new, four votes, if it's not new, it's an amendment, you'll have to have five. So, if it doesn't meet five, those policies will be removed, they will not be passed.
Something else?
Not from me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Persons?
Then the policies would be as they are right now before being amended, they would still be in effect.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Any more comments, questions? Ms. Jordan?
So, that means that we go back to no coffee cups and the, the may or shall or whatever that was, and the five by seven, because it's not amended. So, we'd go back to the original status of the policy, correct?
So, policy-
Because it wasn't amended.
These are the following policies that will be affected. You had previously 1232, 3232, 4232, which is political activities that pre-existed. We did an amendment to that policy. If that policy does not receive five votes, it will not pass, and your original policy that's currently in your policy book will remain in effect. You have 1281, 3281, and 4281, right now amended. If it does not receive five votes, it will not pass, and you will have your original policy in the books. And I don't mean original in terms of the changes we made. I mean literally the policy that's currently active right now on your board docs. That will be the policy without any changes whatsoever. Okay? Yes.
Is that what I said? I just-
Oh, I don't know. But I wanted to clarify.
When I said without the changes in there, it would be-
Without the changes.
As it was, as presented to us earlier, without the changes in there.
Not as presented, as what currently is on board docs without anything that was presented to you earlier.
The very first one.
The very, the first one that you passed.
The original.
The original.
Square one.
Yep.
Ms. Patrica?
I just want to be clear that we were presented some policies earlier today that contain amendments from the first time we discussed amending the policies. So, what we saw today with those crossouts don't necessarily revert back to the original policy. In order to see the original policy as, as it stands today before this vote, we have to go back into board docs and read it. And I'm not sure whether we need to take the time to do that. I don't know if there's confusion. I don't know how to move forward from here.
I mean, does, I mean, the board is entitled, if you want to take some time and go on board docs and look at the original language, just to make sure you're understanding what you're voting on, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Well, we do have a motion on the floor, real quick. I don't know if Mr. Persons or Ms. Morgan-
Basically, would this not be the, the motion we looked at today without any of the green?
Yes. Without any of the green, without any of the strikeouts, just the way that it originally was.
Ms. Morgan?
So, a yes vote is what and a no vote is what?
A yes vote means you approve the policies you want them to pass. A no vote means that you're not going to approve the policies, any of the policies you don't want them to pass.
Right.
But you have six policies that you need to have five members to vote yes on to pass because they are amendments to current policies.
Board members, do we want a moment or not? Then if not, let's go, uh, roll call vote on that.
Apparently, you can vote on board docs, it's fixed, and because this was already on the agenda.
Motion fails four, oh.
So, doesn't fail.
Okay.
All but six are passed to include 2240. It's passed because that was a new policy. And then your political activities and your use of personal property have failed. Please make sure that the minutes properly reflect the vote.
My apologies. Do we want to entertain any other motions at the moment or are we going to... Board, do we wish to readdress this at another moment? Mr. Persons?
I'm not sure where this leaves us in the one flag dispute or any others like that that were mentioned. Does this mean the chair through the superintendent, does this mean that the flag will stay up in Riverdale? Or is it this policy strong enough, as some of the board members have said, that you can have the flag taken down? Or any other... Or the signs that have the safe place with the gay pride stickers behind them, can they also be taken down or will they remain? I mean, I don't know the policy as it was before that we're trying to amend. I don't know if it's strong enough. But I'm asking you if you think it's strong enough through the chair.
Mr. Persons, thank you for the question. I believe that we have... First, let me begin with stickers or the areas for safe space for students so they have a person or someone that they feel has identified themselves as a safe place to have a conversation. We've already begun the replacement of those previous. We are currently handing those out. They'll be rehanded out at the principal's meeting on Friday. And we'll begin to see the change in that particular emblem. It was a board's request and we really believe we were within our right to do so. As to the particular item, I do want to make it very clear that 1232 through 4232 and 1281 through 4281 was my understanding that this was never an attempt to deal with a particular item at Riverdale, but it was a change and a desire for the overall district to look for a classroom neutrality position. It would be my recommendation that though those policies have not passed tonight, that I would be open to any direction from the board to bring those items back to have some additional conversation related to some of the issues that were raised this afternoon during the briefing. As to the legal matter of whether I have full authority now to enforce something, I would need an additional conversation with legal to ensure that I'm not over speaking in a public meeting. So I would ask that I be able to reserve that right for ensuring accuracy to my response.
Before we continue, one second, Mr. Persons and attorney to Bree Bruno, maybe. I'd be interested in perhaps we can entertain a motion to bring back to another meeting for discussion, the policies that did not pass, which would be the 0100 definitions, 1232 political activities, 1281 use of employees, property at school, policy 2240 controversial issues, policy 3232 political activities, policy 3281 use of employees, personal property at school, policy 4232 political activities, policy 4281 use of employees, personal property at school, policy 6330 acquisition of professional architectural engineering landscape, architectural land surveying services, policy 7310 disposition of surplus property. Is that appropriate?
You raise a very valid point, Mr. Chairman. So let me double check as well because we were concentrating on those six policies, but I do believe that you are correct. There's more policies that were not passed, but please give me the opportunity. So 2240 has passed because that is a new policy. I'm just going to say, if I may, Mr. Chairman, pull up the policies and just tell you what has actually passed. And Madam Secretary, if you could please make sure it's reflected in the minutes. 1232 has not. 3232 has not. 4232 has not. 6330 has passed. 7310, which is disposition of surplus property, has not passed. 0100 definitions has not passed. 1281 has not passed. 3281 and 4281 has not passed.
Okay. At that point then, based on your list, I would entertain a motion to bring those back for further discussions at a future board date set. Ms. Patrica?
Make a motion to reconsider 7310?
We're still within the meeting, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I move that we reconsider 7310.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion moved by Ms. Patrica and second by Ms. Jordan. Do we have any discussion? We're going to go to vote then on 7310 disposition of surplus property.
And that will be a roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries seven zero. I would again...
And 6330 as well, which is the acquisition of professional architecture, engineering, landscape, architect and land surveying services.
Ms. Patrica?
Reconsider 6330?
Sec.
But could we pause and just really make sure that's a complete list?
Yeah, because I thought you said that that was a past list.
Did I say that? I'm so sorry.
That was past.
Oh, my apologies. Sorry. Thank you.
Motion necessary.
Nope. So it looks like it was just 7310. That appears to be it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now I'm going to ask, can I entertain a motion for the remaining policies that... Amendments to policies that did not pass tonight for a motion to bring that to a future...
I have one other one. The one I was getting confused on was definition 0100. That's the one that also had an amendment, which was just adding the workplace definition to the bylaws. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion on that or just bring it with the others.
Do we want to make a motion or bring it with the others for 0100 definitions for workplace? Mr. Persons?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and bring it forward now.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Juvenelli. Moved by Mr. Persons, second by Ms. Juvenelli. Any discussion? Ms. Patrica?
Just give me 30 seconds, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote on policy 0100 definitions amendment. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I'm an I. Motion carries seven zero. I would again ask, I would entertain a motion for the remaining policies that... Amendments to policies that did not pass tonight for... To bring it to a future meeting for discussion. So can Ms. Langford...
I just want to make sure that we are very clear. We can bring the policy back for board discussion. However, the policy cannot move forward in the rulemaking process. We will have to start that process over and it will take 28 days.
Okay, would we then entertain a motion for the policies that were not passed tonight, the amendments to start over the rulemaking policy on that? Ms. Langford Fleming?
I make a motion that the amendments that were not passed tonight on those policies be brought back forth to us at the next meeting.
Make sure, yeah.
Do I need to name all of them? List all of the numbers?
So let me help a little bit with language. So we can bring it back and we can bring it back as a pre-brief so that the board can have some additional discussion as to what language you want. And then once the board is satisfied with the language, we can start the formal rulemaking process because it needs to be advertised in the paper and we need to go through this regulatory process to create the policy. So we can, if Ms. Langford Fleming wants to make that motion to bring it back for a pre-brief, board can have the discussion. We can do that.
I make a motion to bring back the policies that were revised and have not passed to the next, to a pre-brief.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Ms. Langford Fleming, second by Mr. Persons. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Patrica?
So could that include, if I may, through the chair, through the board attorney, could that include ultimately landing in a place where we split the policies into two different ones?
However you direct us to do it, we can. Because that will be a pre-brief. It'll be, you know, we'll be gathering information as to what the board's desire is with regards to these two policies.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Also, it was mentioned by one of the constituents that regarding referencing. I don't know if these, one that were similar, I don't know if you could look into that. I don't know if it was, some of them have already been passed. It just made me think about that while we're looking at it. I mean...
Yes, Ms. Juvenelli.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then. Ms. Juvenelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I'm an I. Motion carries six one. At this point, we are going to move on to...
Mr. Fisher, I will ask during our next one-on-ones if the board can give me their thoughts on these policies so that when we bring it to the board, we have an understanding as to what your expectations are. Please.
We will do that. Okay, moving on to go to the order of other business, board member comment and reports. I'm excited to start with our student, Denaria. So please go ahead if you want to address anything.
I am proud to say that I am a leader at Colusa Middle School. Due to Lead Like a Girl, it was at this conference that I was inspired through numerous hands-on activities and powerful women leaders. It is my hope that teachers in Lee County School District can incorporate hands-on activities in their classrooms, like I've experienced over the years. I hope this type of active learning may help others in grasping concepts that would have been difficult without manipulatives and full engagement.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being up here. Great job. Okay, now I'm gonna... I will start with Ms. Morgan. I'll flip it.
I'm just going to make a very brief statement and really for public information. Governor DeSantis has come out and made comments about board implementation of policies that have been adopted by the legislature and blaming school boards and schools and teachers for the problem. Frankly, I appreciate Governor DeSantis clarifying his position, but I think it's important to note that the rules were made by the Department of Education. And our staff is implementing the rules made by the Department of Education, some of which are embedded in policy, others of which are embedded in procedures. So I just wanted the public to understand that we're doing what we were required to do, both by the legislature and the Department of Education. We don't have the ability to judge, independent of them, whether or not we're going to act on rules that we have been told to engage in. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I'll just give... I'll just give a brief update on my health advisory committee. I'm sorry, I didn't do this earlier. Thank you to Amanda Evans. She's partnering with us from the floor Department of Health for all that they're doing within our schools, placing the gardens and especially into the communities of poverty in our district. Our cafeteria managers are working around the clock, I believe, and getting incredibly creative with the produce from the gardens that are amongst the schools in the district, making things as creative as eggplant pizza. I'd like to give that a try.
Is that the crust? The eggplant is the crust?
Correct.
I love it.
There are... There have been ideas thrown out that students who need volunteer hours would be able to help package and produce for our schools that have gardens in some of our lower economic areas in our community, that service hours could be provided to students by packaging boxes to be able to hand deliver to the families as they come through to pick up their child at the end of the day on a Friday, over the weekend, over a long spring break, such as that. So I thought that was a great idea. We had such an educating conversation with a guest speaker, Sergeant Wanda Hanley, that's actually from Henry County, the discussion on human trafficking and what is happening in our country, quite frankly. You would think that it's the... Everybody gets concerned about the white van that you see in the neighborhood, but that is, I'm just quoting what they had said. It's really happening through social media. So it's important that conversations are being had at home, how to use your social media. This is the fastest growing business of organized crime, second to drug trafficking. Florida is number three in the nation in human trafficking. We had a demonstration on our life backs that are in all of our schools. Thanks to Lee Health for partnering with us to make sure that all of our schools have a life back and Narcan. That's all I have from our health advisory committees. I would encourage any of our board members that if you have not gone to see any schools that have gardens, they're amazing. I'm hoping that, you know, it'd be great if they're at all the schools. Congratulations to our female athletes that are participating in flag football. What an amazing opportunity that is for you for a new spring sport. I happen to love football. Now we can watch it year round almost. So that's great. Baseball is underway. I went to see the Early Bird Tournament last night hosted at Terry Park, which kind of reminded me of our partnership that we are discussing this afternoon with Estero. And it was all encompassing, kind of the same thing. And I just, I kudos them and hats off to all of our spring athletes for a great kickoff so far. And that, and you know what, Denaria, I apologize, I should have started with you because you were first on my list. Thank you for coming and I'm sorry this was long. You're... It's not always like this, but thank you so much for all you're doing. You have an amazing family. I hope you thank them for the support that they provide you. And you have an amazing school counselor and teachers that believe in you. So big things for you, young lady. Thank you to Mariner Middle School. You guys are always such a pleasant way to start a meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Persons?
I also agree. Great job. Great family. Way to keep an eye on her. I saw you looking at her the whole time. I gave most of my update earlier and Jada just stole my flag football. How dare you? But anyway, that's all.
Ms. Jordan?
Denaria, thank you for being here. And I know you had to deal with, is that your brother down there making faces at you? I was watching that. But at least he has flowers for you. So, but Lead Like a Girl, I know you mentioned that and that's a really good way of learning and communicating with other girls of your age and some older. So that's a great opportunity and I'm glad that you had that opportunity to be there. I thought that Dr. Blakely was going to give the whole EDAC, so he stopped at February, so I have to continue where he ended. For EDAC, we had 12 members in attendance. I had Ms. Dupree Bruno was online as well as Ms. House. And they did a presentation on the Student Code of Conduct by Director Irucci. There was a lot of questions arose from the presentation regarding the local codes, many, much discussion on the data, on discipline of students, students with disability, African American male students. And I know that they were going to continue that conversation to see where do we... Where does that fall and how do they get the data for that, for the discipline? Director of Positive and Prevention was there, Chuck Bradley, and he introduced our new equity and coordinator, Jennifer, as well. And we gave him a brief update of the legislative priorities because we were in the middle of that and next, at their next meeting, they will then get the rest of that. Harnes Marsh, the garden. Marsh, the gardens, I had the opportunity to go out there. I know, Mr. Persons, we're out there too, so we both wind up, the kids were so excited about showing us their tomatoes, their cherry tomatoes, and wanting you to eat the cherries. They were really good. And the, I think that's only been there a couple, not even a month, and the growth that they have had out there was really exciting for the kids, and they, the opportunity of them walking around and showing us their peppers and, and the, I know I wind up with a purple cabbage, you wind up with a green cabbage, which was absolutely delicious, and they were huge. They were just enormous. But it's given them so much, the, the fact that they can go out there and they can tour with adults and tell you about it, the excitement in their faces. And one was dressed for success. He was in his little suit and everything, and he told me that you have to dress for success, so he was dressed and ready to show us in the garden, in his little suit.
In lunch.
In lunch. And then they provided us, so we had lunch from the cafeteria, which was all the vegetables from the garden. So, it was, it was really a nice experience. And of course, our Principal of the Year was there, and he was, you know, shining because it was his school. And thank you to Mariner Middle School, and I was reminding him, because the last time they were here, the minute they started, all of our lights went out. And so that's why, the minute he came in tonight, he's like, well, hopefully we'll get through this without our lights going off. But I just want to thank all the people who came and spoke as well, briefing and this evening, and thank you, Ms. Fleming, for always bringing us all the information regarding the health, and that's, that's really important. So, thank you for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. So, Denaria's family, I'm gonna ask you to do something weird. Take your right hand and put it out in front of you. Now, go like this. Because you've really done an amazing, amazing job. Denaria, you're very lucky to have a family that supports you in your education. Family involvement is huge in success for our kids, and I just thank you for being here to support her. The flowers are just so sweet. And I could see Mrs. Langford Fleming shaking her head yes, as you were talking about manipulatives and hands-on learning. So, that was a message that I want you to know that we, we heard, and I'm very grateful that you're here. So, thank you. The rest of my comments are just sort of little bits and pieces that entered my brain throughout the day as we were meeting, but it wasn't necessarily appropriate for me to make the comments at the time. One of our board committees talked to us about growth. We also talked about growth in a couple of the other presentations that we had today. Interestingly, Lee Health statistic or fact is that a new kindergarten class is born every single day in the Lee Health system.
Wow.
That's a lot of kids. That's a lot of growth. That's a lot of new elementary classrooms that we're gonna need. So, I would like it if you all who will stay on this board after I'm gone will keep that really shocking fact in mind as you reconsider the half penny sales tax. We were talking about transportation, and one of the individuals who came to the microphone, I think during, again, during an advisory committee update, talked about how important it was to move to our new school start times. And I believe, Dr. Bernier, you said something about we have another year to work on transportation, two more years to work through our transportation issues so that it can be perfected, and what I thought was, so we can screw it up again by changing school start times. I'm hopeful that in the, in the fall, when we figure out our new legislative platform for next year, that it can be for the legislature to back off on that. One of our individuals who was speaking said all of the research shows that that's what's best for kids, but there is no research indicating that it improves educational outcomes for kids. But I think it's gonna be a massive, massive disruption to our schools and to our community. I thought it was interesting that two committees want more information on the HR transformation. You know, our committees have pretty different missions, visions, things that they're supposed to be accomplishing, and I thought it was interesting that two of them want the same information, the same presentation. Attorney Dupree Bruno mentioned the mayor case, and you talked about attendance at school is compulsory unless a parent can send a child to a private school or homeschool that child. So, that made me wonder, and I'm going to wonder out loud, which I probably shouldn't do, but it makes me wonder whether private schools now have to steer clear of political and religious topics since they're receiving public money through vouchers. I wonder if that's one of the dereg things that's being discussed in Tallahassee. I know everybody's shaking their head no, but I thought it was worth saying out loud. And finally, I'd like to thank the board attorney and Chair Fisher for recognizing that our LGBT students and employees are not terrorists, and that that kind of categorization and hate has no place in this boardroom. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
I'll be quick. I have to piggyback off of the gardens because that came up at St. Tastic's, because they were there, some of the schools were there, and we're hoping next year at St. Tastic's to have actual, like a farmer's market with those vegetables. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what they do with that. Other than that, that was a great event at St. Tastic's. Real quick, I, I mentioned this when we had a quick break, but the group that came from Mariner Bay, they're asking about an appeal, Dr. Bernier through the chair, for the Transportation Review Committee. So, I don't know how that processes, if anybody could reach out or advise them, I don't, how that really works, because it's kind of a new thing as it is, so, and that's for another time, but I just want to bring it up. I want to thank Denaria. You did a great job, and your leadership and representation is important and vital, and you go, girl, okay? You got it. And really, I just want to really talk about anti-bullying, because I think it's really important, because all of these policies are because of, for me, it's about bullying, and we have to stop bullying. And that's a big deal. No one should be bullied in their workplace. No one should be bullied to go to school, because it will affect their safety and security in the long run. I think we really need to concentrate on anti-bullying, and I just, it bothers me that people don't feel safe, and, and they're not at times, and that's a shame. And we have to do better, and the only way to do that is to talk about it all the time. So, I'll be talking about anti-bullying quite a bit, because we all have to have it, have it in the forefront. And that's it. Thank you. Have a great evening. Oh, Mariner Middle was great, but Mariner, the JRTC was champions. Thank you.
Thank you. Denaria, great job. Excited to have you up here. We're excited to see what your future is, so thank you for doing this. Truly appreciate it. So, and your family, like everyone said, should be very proud. Great job with, to Mariner Middle as well, and Mariner High School, and said we have some big games tonight and throughout this week for Mariner, so it's, it's been a big week for them. So, real quick, as Sam Fisher, District One here, I just want to reflect on one thing real quick. So, a couple of things have come up about the law, regards to what's going on and people, things have said. I just want to reiterate that no laws have changed at this moment. Until they do, I would hope we would continue to execute and follow those laws, no matter what is said in the press. So, I think that's very important, because I've gotten some emails in those regards too. So, nothing that I'm aware of has changed yet. So, second thing is we talk about process and procedure. Perhaps maybe some of this we should discuss in our master board training, because these, how should I say, these policies, you know, they didn't just come out of the blue. We've been working on them for quite a while. So, and I do appreciate everyone's viewpoint on that, I really do. But I feel like they, you know, weren't controversial until they became controversial. So, you know, as I said, I look forward to some spirited discussions and, and coming together on something that will work for everyone. So, that's just my suggestion. So, Attorney Dupree Bruno, do you have anything for good of the order, public comment?
Thank you very much, Ms., thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So, Denaria, I was reading your little bio, and you said you got some help finding your voice, and you certainly have found your voice sitting here with us on this big stage in eighth grade. So, that's very, very impressive. And your voice will continue to grow stronger as you continue to grow and find your way. You are definitely well on your way, and I've seen your family out there. And am I correct that you got two teachers out there as well? One teacher and one counselor that's out there. Okay. So, not only do you have your parents' support, but you actually have a counselor and a teacher that, what time is it? 8:16 at night is here supporting you. So, as you go through your journey, just don't forget gratitude for those who are there to support you and help you throughout the way, and you definitely have a wonderful future. I can already see that. So, congratulations. Board, I meant to bring this up earlier today, and I did not have the opportunity. You directed that we bring a workshop on the legal department's budget. I would ask that we have some one-on-ones that discuss a little bit more about legal's budget and its processes versus having a workshop, and just incorporate the budget workshop as a whole with regards to legal. That will be my ask, if the board would consider that.
Looks like we're, we're good with that. I don't see any disagreement to that.
I fear the lack of transparency with not having the discussion, and that was what the board directed, so I'm not clear on why we're not following through with that.
I, you're asking me why we're not following through with it?
I'm asking the board.
Oh.
I mean, we're still gonna have a presentation, so, I mean, we're still going through it. That was what my understanding was, so.
Well... My understanding that in lieu of a presentation, there would be one-on-ones in, in the office or online.
And the, and the budget discussion would just be the budget discussion that we have for the entire district, instead of having one specific budget discussion for legal. That was, that was the request.
What does the board so please? Ms. Juvenelli?
Well, if we're going to have budget discussions for the legal department, I think we need to have those in other departments as well. So, because I mean, I believe there's a lot of work that we could do on, in all departments, so I don't think it's just legal.
Ms. Morgan?
So, the other departments or the responsibility of the superintendent, I think the fact that the board attorney, the legal services department reports to the board, it is, it is the responsibility of the board to provide oversight to that budget directly. Certainly, in terms of the larger budget for the superintendent, it is his responsibility to come up with a budget, make recommendations that are consistent with the strategic plan and within the limits of the money we have. But I believe that the board attorney's office needs to report to the board about that budget, and I think that should be done in a, in a public setting, just as the superintendent develops and presents his budget in a public setting for transparent, purposes of transparency. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Persons, followed by Ms. Jordan?
I'm not against having the discussion here, but I think I still would like to have discussion first, one-on-one, and then bring it forward if we feel we still need it or whatever. We maybe can have what our discussion we're doing right now at a later date, because we might all just be fine with the one-on-one. I don't know. I think I will be, but I can't speak for anyone else. But anyway, I think we should do the one-on-ones, go over the budget first before we do the, so at least we know the right questions to ask.
So, just for clarification as well, the legal department follows the exact same process of every other department where the budget is submitted. The chiefs review it. The chiefs decide what will be approved and what will not be approved, and then from there, it just is rolled into part of the budget. So, if the board is asking for us to look into a process where it's directly approved by the board, then we can certainly look into that. But right now, we're just part of the rest of the organization.
Ms. Juvenelli?
And that's my point. That's why I brought that up, because the process is similar, and you don't have control over it. It's, it's approved by the chiefs, correct? So...
Yes, ma'am.
So, let's go to one-on-ones, and then we can figure out which each person is specifically looking for, because I'm still confused on what people are looking for in this. So, why don't we go to the one-on-ones and do that? Are we in agreement, at least, to go at that point?
Can you move his hand up?
Who?
I want to support, I want to support Kathy Dupree Bruno on the legal team in this aspect. The budget processes that currently exists, exist by default, because there has not been direction provided to either the budget office through the superintendent or to legal counsel as to how a budget for the legal staff should be developed. I think it's really important for us to realize, just like RSM has to bring their contracts forward, and you determine whether those contracts were within the budgetary constraints, I think legal deserves that same opportunity as your, as your other employee to have a position and a method by which they can make a recommendation to you. We can work with Dr. Decimore to ensure that we have a budget that reflects the needs of our legal team.
Ms. Juvenelli?
In this past year and the year before, did the budget change? Did it go, did it go increase or decrease?
Our budget has increased. We have additional employees, and we have additional funding for...
Correct.
And this is one of the concerns that we have in terms of having a full discussion of budget, because there's attorney-client information in our budget regarding to investigations, regarding to outside counsel, regarding to cases that we're dealing with. So, those are some of the sensitive matters that honestly, we probably should not be having a open discussion about what we feel needs to be investigated, or what we feel needs to be defended, or what we feel needs to be settled. However, we can provide some information in terms of our daily operation, which is primarily staff.
Right, and that's salaries and so forth, which obviously has increased, but I just wanted to...
Yes.
Thank you, give more detail. Thank you.
Anything else? You have your direction?
So, I think one-on-ones, and then prepare for...
One-on-ones, and then go to a public meeting based on what is said in the one-on-ones and what's asked.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bernier?
Denaria, let's start some controversy, because we haven't had enough for tonight. Where are you thinking about going to high school?
Um, Cape, Cape High School.
That's, that's no choice. You're, you're like already set on going to Cape.
That or...
Oh, see, that's where the controversy is gonna start. Or...
That one or North Fort Myers.
Oh, boy. Okay, so now we've got that out in the ether, and we know that you have two excellent choices with which to choose from. Really, seriously, to moms and dads, it's just an opportunity for me to talk about high school selection. It's like selecting colleges. You need to be sure that you're looking at what the programmatic offerings are of our high schools and finding the academic or the career fit for a student. I know my mom went somewhere, my dad went somewhere, my grandpa went somewhere. It is part of a decision legacy process that many students go through, both for high school and college. But the most important thing a student can make, and you are well on your way to being able to do this with the help of your counselor and your teachers, to make a very informed decision about what's gonna be best for Denaria. And I just, I thought I would start a little controversy tonight, because we haven't had enough. Best of luck with your choice, and make sure you follow up with us. Let us know which one you chose. Couple of quick things for me, other than to recognize an amazing student on our dais tonight. We had an amazing opportunity today. It'll continue tomorrow. The Department of Education is here for the DOE convening regarding BSI schools of the Bureau of School Improvement. We had the luxury of hosting 67 counties in our Kulu Sahachi room today and tomorrow. You'll notice that some individuals that are usually at the board meetings are not here tonight, because they are probably summarily exhausted from all the planning and all the prep work that went into this morning and today, and will continue again tomorrow. It has been a wonderful opportunity for the Department of Education to be here to not only recognize the work of Lee County, but today I learned of our three schools that came out of BSI after just being in for one year under the leadership of our deputy superintendent and the academic services team and the amazing principals in charge of those school buildings and the educators that support them. We also can celebrate 22 other schools across the state that also came out of BSI this past year, in a year where only language arts proficiency and math proficiency were the standards. So, really a great opportunity. Did not know that figure until one of the bureau chiefs announced that today, and a great opportunity to highlight Lee County, and then for them to all learn from each other throughout today and tomorrow. Sports, gotta talk about sports, because we got so much going on. Girls' flag football, one of the things you may not know in talking to athletic directors and principals, the vast majority of girls... and principals, the vast majority of girls trying out for girls' flag football have never tried out for a varsity sport before. They do not actively play another sport, and this was really their first opportunity, including juniors and seniors who had never played in a sport, to take the opportunity to try to belong to the girls' flag football team. If you haven't seen the video about girls' flag football, it's amazing, and I love one of the young ladies, the school escapes me at the moment, who just said, "If you're thinking about it, go try, because it's a lot of fun." Boys' basketball this week, um, coming Friday night, Gateway's off to Tampa to play. Mariner will be home against Seminole High School, they'll be playing towards the final four in Lakeland. Um, currently, we have a soccer game underway for our girls' teams between North Fort Myers and Mariner. They're also playing to move towards the final four next week, and Fort Myers boys are in Tampa with the same opportunity, so, all I say is, if you put something on your schedule, put the semifinals and the finals on your schedule, don't jinx them by just putting the finals, right? Make sure, I mean, don't change your socks, is what somebody on a baseball team once told me. Transportation Task Force well underway. I do wanna get to the bottom of what's happening at Marina Bay. I know that our transportation and our COO have been on top of this issue. It's gone through the appeal, which was created by policy, and I need to go back and look now to see what next steps would be, but again, we're dealing with a gated community issue. I think it's important to note that I have to do more investigation, but that bus stop and where it's located doesn't sound like the Lee County School District had a lot of voice. We would never have, um, asked a builder to build a bus stop inside a gated community. However, stranger things around the school district have happened, it needs further investigation from me and my team, and we'll, we'll take a look at it. Darren Knolf, Mariner Middle School, Mariner Middle School Band, um, if you are ever having a difficult day as a board member or as a human being, and we, he's representative of the educator still present and all the wonderful music and, and fine arts teachers we have, Darren Knolf is a place to go visit. It will just energize you in how he approaches music education with his children, and, um, he's just one of the people of our many educators as we move through Golden Apple season, that need to be highlighted for the amazing work they every, do every day. And I think if you talk to Darren Knolf, he'll tell you that he feels his purpose and his impact each and every day. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you for a good meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. On Tuesday, uh, March fifth, wow, there will be a school board briefing at 2:30 PM, followed by a school board action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business come before this body and see no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:28 PM. Everyone have a good evening, and let's get out of here.